Thank you. Welcome to the November Planning Board meeting for Pitt County. If Ms. Auton, if you could call the roll, please.
Fred Austin.
Present.
Don Brown.
Present.
Naomi Buck.
Present.
Madison Downing. Brad Guth.
Present.
Lyman Hardy.
Present.
RJ Hemby. RJ Hemby. Charles McGlaughorn. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I believe RJ is on. He may be muted.
Thank you, Ms. Auton. Do we have a quorum to conduct business?
If RJ does not confirm he's online, no, sir.
All right, RJ, are you there? I see his hand, he's put his hand up. Mr. Attorney, is that enough for him to be counted present?
No.
Okay.
The statute allowing us having remote participation requires that we at least be able to hear a voice.
Okay.
I don't know if it's possible that we take a moment to see if we can resolve the technical issue. If not, the board can't take any action tonight, but could hear informational items or...
Staff, would you like to start with the informational items until we can get Mr. Hemby situation cleared up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to do that tonight, but also we had a couple of other people that might want to join in that are, had mentioned that they would be here tonight. I just want to confirm with our Public Information Office that they will let other folks into the meeting now.
Yes, everyone's been admitted in.
And Dawn, if other people still try to get in the next few minutes, can you allow them in as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead with the informational items, Mr. Chair. First up, as most of you are already aware, we have been working on the redistricting of the voter districts here in Pitt County for the last three months after the census 2020 information was released, the public law data. Please, the report Monday night, the commissioners did approve a plan. Our Assistant County Attorney actually took the adopted resolution to the register of deeds this afternoon, and that has been promptly recorded and distributed to the agencies that are required by statute to receive those. So, planning staff is pleased to say we've done our portion with that, and we're ready to move on to other planning activities now. And Eric will actually present a portion of that a little while later, and we can actually do that without any action too, Mr. Chair, if we need a few extra minutes. So, but that was number one. Redistricting's completed. The second item really also has a bearing on your December meeting. I'll go ahead and let you know we'll need to meet in December. That will be December the 15th. The Board of Commissioners has asked that planning staff and the planning board revisit any of our regulations concerning those large-scale data processing centers. Cryptocurrency facilities, Bitcoin facilities, as have been used by layman's terms over the last couple of months, as we've considered a request that came in for a special use permit near the Belvoir School area. A couple of the commissioners in particular were concerned about how close these facilities may be to schools or to occupied residents. So, all said, that information will be coming back to you. Staff will do a further review and present that at your December meeting. The Board of Commissioners has requested that to come promptly back to them. They would like to have that considered in January if possible. So, just know we have an action item coming your way in December. Back to the special use permit, that special use permit was withdrawn by the petitioner, and in turn, that particular facility is no longer under consideration there near Mark Luther King Boulevard and Belvoir School Road. So, that is off the board's consideration at this point. We also had included, Mr. Chair, members of the departmental monthly report, as well as several, a lot of information concerning that large-scale data processing center, and you could kind of follow the action that was taken with that. And with that, if we don't have a quorum yet, Eric can also go over information pertaining to our comprehensive land use plan.
Thanks, Mr. Rhodes.
Mr. Chair, it looks like Ms. Downing has joined the Zoom. If she's able to communicate with us, I believe that would give us...
I'm here.
Hey, Madison. Great.
So...
Good evening, all.
Good afternoon. You have given us a quorum, so we will start our meeting at the prayer and pledge of allegiance now. So, if anyone, everyone will join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, if you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Believe everybody should have received a copy of the minutes for your review and consideration, and if there aren't any corrections or amendments to those, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I approve.
We have a motion for approval for Madison. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Lyman, I believe.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Auton, if we were going to do a vote, please?
Fred Austin.
Approved.
Don Brown. Naomi Buck.
Present.
Approved.
Approved. Approved.
Madison Downing.
Approved.
Brad Guth.
Approved.
Lyman Hardy.
Approved.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ms. Auton, were there any public addresses to the board?
No, sir, not that I've been aware of.
Thank you. Our first rezoning request, Mr. Rogers will handle that. Mr. Garcia, Felipe Garcia Ortiz rezoning.
Good evening, Chairman Guth and Planning Board members. Is my screen sharing appropriately?
Yes.
Great. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. The first rezoning request we have this evening is submitted by Felipe Garcia Ortiz, and he's requested to rezone 1.71 acres of his property located on the northeastern corner of the intersection of US 264 East and Old Washington Road. And he's proposing to rezone that property from general commercial conditional district to general commercial conditional district to allow for the operation of automobile repair service. A little history on this property. On April 18th, 2005, the Board of Commissioners approved a rezoning request to have the property rezoned from rural agricultural to light industrial. And per the public hearing from that meeting, the owner at the time proposed to operate a fixing business on the site. However, that rezoning request was not conditional, and the property was never developed for the stated purpose. On February 17th, 2020, the parcel was rezoned again from light industrial to general commercial conditional district for the operation of automobile repair service, automobile towing service, motor vehicle sales and tire service. The board members that were on at that time, they remember this rezoning coming before you, before it did go to the commissioners for their final vote on that. The property was never developed for that proposed use, and the property was sold. The new owner proposes to operate a similar use, but due to the significant changes to the previously approved site plan, they must reapply for a new conditional zoning district and obtain a new zoning compliance permit. So, that's why this is back before you this evening. Locational map, you see here, again, the property is located on US 264 East, almost to the Beaufort County line, just east of North Bronson Bridge Road. Some site pictures of the property. This is looking at the property from US 264 East. This is looking north of Old Washington Road. This is looking east towards Washington on US 264 East. This is west back towards Greenville, again, on US 264 East. A couple of the adjacent properties are residential, just to give a couple of examples of those, as well as the property directly across the street on the opposite side of Old Washington Road. There are some commercial uses in the area. This is a Dollar General store that is either open or going to be open very soon at the corner of North Bronson Bridge Road and US 264 East. A pottery store farther down US 264 East. A commercial kind of shell building with a couple of different commercial uses within it. A stone business, as well as a used car dealership. The future land use map does designate this property as being within the commercial crossroad community. The commercial crossroad community is a designation that is intended to include limited commercial land uses that are appropriate to crossroad development. Appropriate land uses include a mix of residential, public and institutional, and commercial uses. Residential uses can be located near non-residential uses with appropriate buffers. Also, land uses within this category could develop with public sewer or private septic tank systems, and the category is designated at prominent crossroad locations throughout the county where existing commercial development provides goods and services to a larger surrounding population. The existing land use map, you see that their surrounding parcels around it are mostly undeveloped, as well as residential. You'll see a couple of commercial and institutional uses as well. The current zoning map, you see again rural agricultural, rural residential with the Dollar General store there, that other red parcel on North Bronson Bridge Road. The general commercial district is primarily intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to a major thoroughfare or the necessary utilities to support such development. A conditional zoning district allows for approval of a proposal for a specific use with reasonable conditions to assure the compatibility of the proposed use with the enjoyment of neighboring properties. And again, the proposed use is to operate an automobile repair service business. The conceptual sketch plan that was submitted to our office, you'll see the entire parcel highlighted there in the yellow dash line is recommended or has been submitted for rezoning to general commercial. One of our requirements, since the property is located within the highway commercial overlay district, or excuse me, highway overlay corridor, is that there's a 50-foot highway buffer yard. The remaining property lines will have a 20-foot property line buffer yard. NCDOT is requiring a 10-foot non-access easement. The proposed structure, I've highlighted there in kind of that blue spray color, there are proposed five bays for the garage, as well as an office and bathroom facilities. The gray outline is the parking area, as well as the driveway that will be required to be paved, and then an existing driveway there on Old Washington Road. The Pitt County Planning Staff does find that this request is consistent with the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, given the subject property's future land use designation as a commercial crossroad community, as well as its location within close proximity to other general commercial and general industrial zone property. We also find that this request is reasonable and in the public interest because the subject property is located off a major thoroughfare within an area that is designated as a commercial crossroad development. In addition, there are several existing general commercial zone properties located within close proximity to the subject property. So, staff does recommend approval of this request with some additional conditions, those being that the lot shall not be maintained, used, or operated as a salvage yard for the storing, keeping, buying, or selling wrecked, scrapped, ruined, or dismantled motor vehicles or motor vehicle parts, and no more than two unlicensed used motor vehicles, which cannot be operated under their own power, may be kept or stored on the property for a period of 15 days or more. No zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan prepared in accordance with Appendix B of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County Planning for review and approval. The site plan shall include, but is not limited to, the following. Most of these you saw on the conceptual sketch that was already submitted, but we will make sure during the formal review process that these are being met. But a minimum 50-foot wide highway buffer yard is required along the entire property line adjacent to US 264 Right's Way. Side and/or rear buffer yards not less than 20 feet wide where the proposed development abuts a residential zoning district or residentially used lot. A landscaping plan is required and shall include a combination of trees, shrubs, grasses, and other ground cover in accordance with requirements of Section 74 landscaping of buffer yards. Accessory building, as well as parking and loading areas shall not be located within any required buffer yard. The required parking spaces, access drives, and loading areas shall be paved and maintained with concrete, asphalt, or similar material of sufficient weight and thickness and consistency to support anticipated traffic volumes and weights. A floodplain development permit is required prior to development within the special flood hazard area. A soil erosion and sedimentation control plan shall be submitted for any future development of this property that results in land disturbance over one acre. The site must comply with Pitt County Stormwater Ordinance for nutrient control. Nutrient loading and peak flow calculations shall be reviewed and improved prior to any improvements involving more than one half acre. In the final two, they must obtain all required permits from Pitt County inspections to occupy any proposed structures and comply with all applicable environmental health requirements for waste water disposal, and obtain a driveway permit from NCDOT and comply with all requirements for access to the subject property. Public comments will not be entertained by the planning board. After that, the planning board will make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, who are scheduled to hold a public hearing on December 20th at 6:00 PM. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions from the board or open that up to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there any questions from the board about the staff's recommendation for approval for this or the conditions recommended? All right, I'm hearing none. So, Ms. Auton, is there folks here to speak to this item?
No, sir.
And I do believe the engineer's on. I don't know if he planned to speak unless there's any questions of him.
Mr. Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Jim Walker. I'm speaking on behalf of the Ortes. Basically, Ben has covered everything that they understand they've got to do, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you guys may have as to the development and proposed use.
Okay, thank you, sir. I don't know that we had any questions from the board, but let's find out. Any questions from any of the board members? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Lyman Hardy, motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Hardy to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Ms. Madison Downing. Ms. Auton, could you do roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Were we able to resolve RJ Hemby's sound?
Mr. Hemby, are you here? Mr. McGlaughorn has also joined in.
Can you hear us, Sonny?
Yes, thank you. I am. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, I'll do the roll call. Fred Austin.
Approved.
Don Brown.
Approved.
Naomi Buck.
What'd I say?
Approved.
Opposed.
Approved.
Approved.
Madison Downing.
Approved.
Brad Guth.
Approved.
Lyman Hardy.
Approved.
And Mr. McGlaughorn.
Approved.
Okay.
And Auton, I do see Mr. Hemby is vis... You can see him now. Now, whether or not we can hear him or not. Mr. Hemby, are you muted?
He shows us unmuted, but we still cannot hear him.
Okay. So, the motion to approve passed.
Yes, sir.
All right, the next item, I believe Mr. Gooby is going to address that one. It's for Tony Moore rezoning.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would do have one more rezoning for you tonight. Okay, can everybody see that on the screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Our request is by Mr. Tony Moore. To rezone 4.11 acres of his property, it's parcel number 50575. It's located on the eastern side of Spate Seed Farm Road. It's on the northern corner of Spate Seed Farm's intersection with Four Lines Road. Our request is to go from rural agricultural to general commercial conditional district in order to operate a self-storage or mini-storage facility. Now, this is the vicinity map. You see it's located just south of US 13, the Heinz Crossroads. And it's, again, it's that northeastern corner of the intersection of Four Lines Road and Spate Seed Farm Road. This is a view of the subject property. Pretty much, the rezoning request pretty much encompasses everything between the white picket fences that are on the property. You see, it's currently used as a horse pasture. This is looking back towards the southern end of the property here. And this is a view from Four Lines Road, looking north to the other end of the property. And this is looking to the north, back towards Heinz Crossroads, and the south along Spate Seed Farm Road. This is the intersection at Four Lines and Spate Seed Farm Road, which is, again, that property, again, is on that northeastern section. You can see the white fence to the right. And this is looking to the east on Four Lines. You can see some, just beyond, it's primarily wooded heading out that way, but just beyond some of those trees on the right-hand side, there's some single-family residences along there. And then directly across from the property is Warren Chapel Church. Back up at Heinz Crossroads, there are a couple of commercial uses at the crossroads. This is one that's on the northern side. It's a property that sells storage buildings and barns, and there's also some other, a couple of other commercial buildings. And then on the other side, which is actually, this is actually a portion of the subject property that's already some commercial at the corner that's being operated as a used car lot. So, the property is within the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan area. And so, as you see there, it's highlighted there, it's designated as agriculture. Under that plan, areas that are designated as agriculture are specifically devoted for agricultural uses, including forestry, crop production, livestock rearing, and pasture land. And policies could include restrictions on the density or size of subdivisions in key agricultural areas. There's also a couple other policy recommendations that are specific to this type of development. The first is LU-1, states to encourage a land use pattern that capitalizes on opportunities for commercial and industrial development while limiting strip development. And it states to limit large-scale commercial uses to areas that are designated as commercial on the future land use map. And then also, policy LU-2 states to protect agriculture in the study area. And to do that would be to encourage only very low-density, small-scale residential development in the agricultural areas west of the bypass. Existing land uses you see are primarily agricultural and residential. There's residential along Four Lines Road and to the north along Nash Joyner Road. You also see some scattered small-scale commercial, particularly at the crossroads and up on 13. The zoning in the area is primarily rural agricultural, and again, you see some smaller general commercially zoned property. Again, the property on the southern side of 13, at that corner of the crossroads, that is part of this parent parcel that includes the rezoning request. The general commercial district is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in those areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the utilities to support such development. Again, it is a conditional zoning district, which allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to ensure that it's compatible with the surrounding neighboring properties with the use enjoyment of the neighboring properties. And again, that proposed use is a self-storage warehouse. As part of their submittal, they did provide a conceptual sketch plan. And I'll kind of point out a few things on here. Typically, we highlight and color a little bit there, but it's already in color, so I'll just sort of highlight a few things. The area you see highlighted there is the proposed rezoning area. Again, it's about a little over four acres. Kind of encompasses that fencing area that I showed you on the photos. There are 13 proposed storage buildings that are included, as well as proposed stormwater pond. And then they also have a proposed 10-foot vegetative buffer that would surround the entire property, and that's a requirement of our zoning warrants as well. Due to its designation as agriculture under the Southwest Bypass Plan, staff does find that the request is not consistent with the plan. Again, those policy recommendations, LU-2 of the plan, states that agriculture should be protected in that study area, and in those areas that are designated as agricultural should only include very low-density, small-scale residential development should be encouraged in those areas. Staff also finds it's not reasonable and is not in the public interest, primarily due to the size of the use. Again, it's about a little over four acres, and it's located in an area that's designated for agriculture and very low-density residential development. So, with that, staff does recommend denial of the request. We'd like to now entertain public comments by the board, and then the board will then make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners are scheduled to hold a public hearing also on December 20th at 6:00 PM. And Mr. Chair, we'd like to open up public comments, and we do have a couple of people here online tonight to speak about the request.
Thank you, Mr. Gooby. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gooby from the Planning Board about the recommendation for denial of this rezoning request? All right, I don't hear any questions from Mr. Gooby. I do think Mr. Moore would like to speak. Is there anybody else that's... All right, Mr. Moore.
Say.
Mr. Moore, you're muted. You need to unmute your microphone.
Mr. Chairman, are we allowing him the three minutes or the five?
Yes, we'll allow him three minutes, if you'll track that for me, Tab.
There you go.
There we go.
Good evening. I've been looking at this for a number of years. I used to ride my horses, but I hadn't ridden it in a while, so I was going to give this a try. And I'm tired of cutting grass in this field. Hadn't been farmed since I've owned it 27 years. And I've ridden, ridden horses all these years, but not anymore. And I understand your policy, and I respect that also. I've been in your chute, so I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there anybody else, Ms. Auton, that would like to speak?
Eric, is there someone else?
Brad, this is Mike Tolson with Mankay Associates, and I'm just here as the consulting engineer for Mr. Moore to answer any questions if the board has any questions of me.
Okay.
Uh, but I haven't heard any yet.
Thanks, Mr. Tolson. I don't think we had a whole lot of questions. But we will, um, ask for a motion now, um, to vote on the recommendation to deny, uh, this request. Do I hear any motions?
I make a motion to deny the request.
Madison Downing makes the motion to deny. Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
Uh, Don Brown, second. Ms. Otten, if you will. Roll call vote, please?
Okay, the motion is to deny the request.
Mr. Chairman, I think that was Fred Austin that seconded, just for the record. Okay. Sorry about that.
So I, I do approve of the denial.
Okay. Fred Austin approves of the denial. Don Brown?
Approve of the denial.
Okay, Naomi Buck? Okay. Madison Downing?
Approve of the denial.
Brad Guth?
Approved.
Lyman Hardy?
Approved of the denial.
Charles McGlawnhorn? Charles McGlawnhorn?
I approve of the denial.
Okay. RJ Hemby? Okay, still can't hear RJ. Okay, that's everyone, sir.
Okay, thank you. The motion was denied, and that'll be recommendate, recommended to the, uh, County Commission for their, uh, twen- December twentieth meeting, correct?
That's correct, sir. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the comprehensive land use plan update. Mr. Gooby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, we are, um. About that time, uh, to start looking at our comprehensive land use plan again, um, and, and it's. Pretty much time to, to bring it forward and try to update it, to bring it in line with, uh, more current policies. My screen to move here. There we go. Um, as you're aware, as, as we've talked about regularly, um, the comprehensive land use plan guides all the future growth and development within the county. Uh, it was initially adopted in nineteen ninety, and it's had two major updates since then, in two thousand and two, just prior to countywide zoning coming into effect. And then in two thousand and eleven was our last, uh, update. Uh, since that time, since that twenty eleven update, uh, we have continued to experience a lot of growth in the county. Uh, and we anticipate a lot more growth, particularly in some areas, uh, around the Southwest Bypass and NC forty-three South Corridor. So you're familiar with those. We've already done land use plans for those areas, uh, but it's, it's time to, to kind of look at countywide as well to bring those up to speed. Um, chapter one sixty D of the statutes does require local governments to reasonably maintain a comprehensive plan. Uh, so based off that, we've also determined that, that the plan does need to be updated or should be updated so that we do remain in compliance with chapter one sixty D. And again, also to ensure that all of our, all of the decisions that, that you're making or the recommendations you're making and the decisions that the Board of County Commissioners are making. Uh, that those are all consistent with the county's current vision and priorities. Uh, so just to give you an idea of, of where we are in the process, in September, uh, we did send out what's called a request for letters of interest. Um, part of the funding for this, this project is coming from, uh, the, the Greenville Urban Area NPO and NCDOT. Uh, and as part of their selection process, they require these RFLOIs to be sent out. Uh, to seek a planning consultant to assist with the development of the plan. Starting today and, and through tomorrow, we're conducting interviews with the, with the firms that have responded to that. Uh, we're hoping to make a selection hopefully by the end of the week and, um. Start getting a, uh, start going through the process of contracting with them, and, um, in December, we're looking to send. Give an update to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, get their approval and consent on, uh, entering into that contract with the selected firm. Uh, and then in January, kicking it off and starting the planning process, and we, we anticipate that to take about twelve months. Uh, and we'll be bringing a lot more information to you over the next couple of months to, to, to keep you up to date. Um, some of the things that we'll start with is we'll be looking to establish a steering committee for the plan. Uh, and we anticipate, uh, at least, at least some of the board members to be a part of that process, if not the whole board. Uh, as well as some other members of the community maybe to, to participate in that. Uh, and then, um, let's say also start to identify some, some key stakeholders throughout the county to get their input. Um, so like I said. Over the next couple of months, we'll bring more information to you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gooby. Are there any questions from the board? All right, I do not hear anybody speaking up, so it sounds like you covered it, Mr. McGooey.
Thank you.
And I believe unless Mr. Rhodes has any other, um, items, I will. Entertain a motion to. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Don Brown.
All right, Don Brown.
Second.
Madison Downing with the second. Ms. Otten, if you'll do a roll call, please?
Okay. Uh, Fred Austin?
Let's adjourn.
Don Brown?
Adjourn.
Naomi Buck?
Adjourn.
Madison Downing?
Adjourn.
Brad Guth?
Adjourn.
Lyman Hardy?
Adjourn.
And Charles McGlawnhorn?
Adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. We'll see you in December, and just as a reminder, there is no Christmas party this year. Sorry, guys.
Thank y'all.
Thanks a lot for joining.
Thank you.